Now eight oh two. And today's Tuesday, April the fourteenth, twenty twenty. And we're at Ringled Elementary Cafeteria. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Villarreal, can you help us with the pledge of allegiance? The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as for all. At this time, I'm gonna do roll call.
Elias.
Yes.
We're having a hard time understanding you.
Do I take my mask mask off?
As long as you're six feet away, you should be okay. Just don't cough or sneeze or breathe.
Good luck.
Thank you. Um, do you understand me now?
That's better. Thank you.
I'm gonna do roll call. Uh, Mr. Ramirez.
Present.
Mr. Villarreal.
Present.
Mr. Castillo.
Present.
Uh, Dr. B.
Present.
Mrs. Lopez.
Present.
And myself, uh, Les Arbelas, present as well. Uh, section three, approval of minutes for regular board meeting of March the twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Emergency board meeting, March the twenty fourth, twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. President, before we take a vote, I think there's just one issue needs to be clarified when it, uh, there's a lot of causing some confusion. When it comes to the early notification resignation incentive plan, it makes it seem that we approved an entire plan. When in reality, it was the the survey or the planned survey. That's what the decision making form reads. That they were trying to get a survey to employees who meet the specific criteria. If it was an entire plan, we'd have a lot more details. And I've spoken to the superintendent before the meeting started today, and that's the, the, that's, that was what was presented to the board. So I just wanna make sure that that's clarified because of the way it reads and makes it read like there's an entire plan in place that was approved when it was just a survey going out to them. So with that, if that correction is made, I'll go ahead and move that they they be approved.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez, second by Mr. Villarreal. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Section five, rec- uh, recommending approval for the consent agenda. The board has the, uh, uh, the board has agreed to discuss the following items.
I, I move that we approve of the consent agendas presented, which is item one, two, and three.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number four, consider and take possible action on awarding the following bids. Bid number twenty dash thirty-five. RFP. Number twenty dash thirty-six, bid number thir- twenty dash thirty-seven. Number twenty dash thirty-eight, number twenty dash dash thirty-nine, number twenty dash forty. Do we have a motion on, uh, item four?
Mr. President, real quickly, when I'm, I'm of the understanding, when you go to bids, you have to go to the lowest price. I don't know if Joe David's here. So with that said, you know, I think what we need to do is make a motion to, uh, approve the lowest bid. And in cases of emergency, then we can buy from anybody, but RFQs, you can buy from anybody. Bids, you have to go to the lowest one. So if, if that's okay with you, I would like to make a motion to approve item four to the lowest bidder. And in cases of emergency, they can buy whoever they want. And, uh, the RFQs will, uh, because bids, I believe you need to, they need to be the lowest bidder, correct or not? And I'm saying, let's, let's approve that item. And if we need to go and buy things in an emergency, we allow them to go buy in an emergency.
Ms. Robles, are you online?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, everyone.
Did you get to hear, Mr. Villarreal?
Yes.
Can you give us guidance on that?
Okay, so basically you just want to go with the lowest bidder, even though they are out of town, out of town. And in case of an emergency, we can go with the other, uh.
Lenders. Yeah, because the law prescribes that if you go out to bids, you have to award it to the lowest bidder, correct?
Right.
So my question is.
It all depends on the, on the criteria that we're using and, and on the points.
I, I, I think the, the avenue that should have been taken on these, if we were gonna do that, would have been an RFQ. I think that's where maybe the error came in because if you do, if you go out for bid, then the law requires you to pick the lowest bidder. So I think that's where, is, we have some problems with this.
My question is, why don't we approve the lowest bid and if we need to buy in an emergency basis, we can buy from anybody. And that would be my motion. To prove item four as presented to the lowest bid and if we need to buy in an emergency basis, that we give the authorization on these times so they can buy whoever they need to.
So are we making an amendment to the current motion because the item as stated doesn't have any indication of any lower bids? So are we approving the item as presented with an amendment?
No, we're approving, we're approving item four as presented and, and in, in the bids, you have to give it to the lowest one. And I'm saying, we have to give it to the lowest one, but also do the caveat of saying in these times that we can buy from, on an emergency basis, from people we need to buy. Otherwise, you only have, we can only buy from the lowest bidder, correct or not, Ms. Robles?
Okay, so basically you're referring to the catalog bids that we have here on this item.
You have bid, you have, the bid is twenty.
Then who decides what is an emergency and what is not?
You, you only have one RFP and the rest of them are bids. That's all I'm trying to say. On the RFP, you can do whatever you want, but on bids, you have to, is it, am I correct to say you need to go to the lowest price or not?
They want guidance from you, Dianita. Do we have to go with the lowest bid or not?
Okay, we will go with the lowest bidder. And then for emergencies, go to the other ones.
That's what I'm saying.
So that's your reckon.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
We have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number five, consider and take possible action to authorize the superintendent to approve or to deny the continuation of the early notification resignation incentive after the deadline of the enrollment period of employees eligible for the program.
I, I make a motion to authorize the superintendent to continue the, the survey and bring it back to us to see how much the cost is going to be. And for her to continue what she's doing and the enrollment period, I believe ends when?
Twenty, the twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fourth.
And after that, bring it back to us and see if it's her recommendation for the board to accept the program or not. That's my move.
That's exactly the recommendation we're making.
Okay.
Second.
Well, motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Sorry, Mr. President, but can we make sure that the minutes are specified? What I'm seeing is the minutes don't, we make a little amendment here or we, or we modify it to some degree and it's not in the minute.
I will talk to, uh, Becky.
Thank you so much.
Item number six, consider and take possible action on approving an order cancelling an election that was ordered to be held in the Río Grande City C I S D on May the second, twenty twenty, for the purpose of a bond election, providing for the severability.
I, I make a motion as so presented, but instead of cancelling, I think we need to put postpone indefinitely because I don't think we can cancel an election that we already called. So instead of cancelling, I think we postpone indefinitely.
That's our recommendation, sir. Uh, we did not finalize it in the administrative recommendation, but it will be postponed for indefinitely.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Eddie, can we see Dr. B. and, and can we see a panel?
Yeah, because when they raise their hand.
Because we're not seeing them voting.
Just for those that on video at home, we just can't see when you're raising your right hand, so we're trying to change that. Okay, we see Dr. B. now. Uh, Letty's there. But when they raise their right hand, we can't see when they do that or their left.
We're down at the bottom. I think it has like, uh, people on the right side, right there. And you can use, uh, the windows.
We would just need those, those two at least. Yeah.
It's Gallery View.
Gallery View. Gina, do you know where to find Gallery View?
Yes, ma'am. It's at the top right-hand corner.
There it is. There it is. We got it. We got it.
There you go.
There you go.
Number six. Do I read it again or just?
We already voted, correct? I think, I think they voted.
Yeah, no, we've voted already.
Yeah.
Item number seven, consider and take possible action on amendment of Tasby localized policy DEA.
I move that we approve item seven as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number eight, consider and take possible action on twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we, school calendar.
I move that we approve item eight as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
For the record, Mr. President, that would be calendar two.
Uh, okay.
Second.
Calendar two.
Yes. That was gonna be my question because there's, there's two calendars, uh, survey. So calendar two? Yes, sir. Um, Mr. President, members of the board, superintendent. Can y'all hear me at home? So be.
Hello.
Can you hear?
I can hear you, Dr. B.
Hey, I can hear you too, but only you.
Exactly. And I can't hear.
Testing. Can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me now?
I can also only see you.
Can you hear us?
I can see the top. I see Cindy and Eliassad and you, but you're the only one that moves. Oh, Cindy's moving.
Elsa's moving.
I don't see Elsa. Only Cindy.
Ah, Gina's moving.
Oh, we can't hear.
Maybe, maybe you stand there.
Everyone's moving. I can't hear anybody but you.
I can hear.
Call him. Call him.
Okay, I can hear now.
That was not, that was not connected then.
I use this one right here.
So I, then I'll make another motion to move exactly like administration is requesting. Second.
Motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by, uh, Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider and take possible action on authorizing the superintendent to repair flooding issues at Río Grande City High School Gymnasium.
Mr. President, I move that, uh, we approve item nine and ten, but put a cap of seventy-five thousand on each of these to total to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if they need more money than that to come back to the board.
Uh, Mr. Ramirez is not available, right?
My question is, why don't we just put seventy-five thousand dollar cap on each project, one for the, for the, uh, for the first one and seventy-five for the second one? And if we need more money, well, then come back to us.
We will go out and get three quotes.
Right.
From local vendors. And then if it does exceed that number, then we'll come back and, and, uh, maybe do an emergency meeting.
That's fine.
So that because, uh, more rain is coming in and, and we need to fix the problem outside. Because if it rains again, then the insurance company will not take care of, um, the course.
So why don't, why don't we approve a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand for both projects? And if you need to spend more money on one project, well, it gives you lead way, do the one that's most important.
Okay. All right.
We have, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal to approve item, uh, nine and ten with a hundred and fifty.
Cap of a hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Can you hear us, uh, Dr. B.?
Oh, yes. I was waiting for all opposed.
What was that, Dr. B?
I was waiting for all opposed.
All opposed.
Oh. All opposed. Any?
So for the, for the one, for the two?
Yeah.
Motion, motion carries. Item eleven, consider and take possible action on amendment of, uh, Tasby localized policy E I C.
I, I move that we approve item eleven as presented.
We have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor.
Excuse me, sir. Can I, can I hear a little bit about what exactly the, the resolution is?
Mr. Salinas?
Elsa. Elsa.
Hold on, let me unmute. Hold on.
You're not unmuted.
I'm unmuted. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, basically, the resolution is that we're asking the board to give us permission to not modify our ranking policy because that is not the recommendation on Tasby. They are recommending that we just make a modification for the time being. And the modification that we're asking to make is found, do you all have it in your packet, the copy of the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, in the middle of the page, I bolded the part that we're modifying and it would be one, two, three, four, or it says five now, therefore be it resolved. What we're asking to do is we're asking to determine the local honor, including valedictorian and salutatorian determination based on grades available, including and using the fourth, six weeks as a semester grade for the eighth semester average instead of the fourth and fifth, like our regular policy states right now. So basically what we're doing is we're cutting off the ranking policy at the last official grades we had prior to spring break, prior to COVID. It was the grade without any kind of modification. And the reason that we want to include the four, six weeks is because our regular policy would normally say we include the fourth and the fifth. But since the fifth was interrupted, we didn't think it would be fair to anybody to include the fifth because the fifth was not completed. But we didn't wanna do away with the fourth because the fourth actually happened. So to be fair to all of the seniors and all of the undergraduates, we felt that it was necessary to include the four, six weeks because students actually worked hard, they earned their grades, there was no modification, it was prior to COVID. So we didn't wanna like toss that aside and get somebody to say, well, why didn't you include that? So what we're asking to do is include that particular four, six weeks that did take place. And we're asking, instead of it counting like it normally would count, uh, we are asking to weigh it differently. So instead of counting one-eighth of the total average for the four, six weeks, we would be using the eighth semester, but we would only count it one-fifteenth or half of the weight. So instead of counting one-eighth, it would count one-fifteenth because it wasn't the whole duration, but we're still including it.
There's some.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's, that's the recommendation from Tasby as well? Is that the way they're, or is that upon?
Yes. Tasby recommended two things. Tasby recommended that either schools do away with anything that happens second semester, but we didn't think that was fair to some of our students because we know that they worked hard. Or they asked to make mi- minor modifications that would be fair and they would be applicable to all students in whatever modifications we made. So after discussing, we brought in the high school principals, we brought in the district ranking committee and the chairperson of the different campus, uh, ranking committees. And we met on a Saturday. It took us all day to iron out because we have to weigh both options. And this is what we came up with, those two recommendations. And it, it's the least disruption because we're still including the fourth, we're not including the fifth because it might hurt some students. But we're not doing away with what the kids actually earned, and that's what we're trying to do. And once we get it approved, the resolution, then the next step for us is to let the kids know, let the seniors know, meet with the principals and let the counselors know. This is the way we're gonna rank so that the kids can at least know, okay, this is how we're going to rank and proceed and move forward.
Thank you so much and make sure and thank the, the committee for their input as well. Mr. President, we have a motion and a second. We just need a vote.
We have a motion by.
Me?
Mr. Villarreal and second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Letty's not hearing.
Letty, can you hear us?
No, I couldn't hear you. I'm four.
Okay. Item twelve, consider and take possible action on resolution to consider alternative graduation requirements.
I make a motion that we approve item twelve as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by, uh, Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
Can I hear a little bit about the resolution?
I was gonna ask for the same thing.
Elsa.
We're at, uh, resolution, uh, alternative, uh, graduation requirements.
Uh, basically, this is just a renewal. This gives us permission to, uh, graduate any student who meets the qualifications. And this is not necessarily for our seniors right now, it's for our seniors prior. Uh, it's something that, um, the TA has extended till twenty twenty-one. So we're basically just asking permission that if any ex-graduate wishes to graduate under this, um, resolution, that we give them permission provided they present the documentation. The way we're handling it right now, this would be the last graduating class from Rio Grande City High School uh, prior to the E O C exam being part of the graduation requirement. Any student who's out there that is missing the, the tax for graduation, the teams for graduation and any exam prior to that, if they provide the proper documentation, one can be that they have already gotten their GED, one can be that they're enrolled in college, one can be that they actually got a license in a, in a certain profession. If they present that documentation and are missing a section of the, of the star or the team or the, the toss, then they can graduate provided we have this resolution in place. And we have it currently, we're just asking to renew it since the state extended it to twenty twenty-one. They were supposed to cut it off at twenty twenty in August of twenty twenty, but they've extended it another year. I think it's another two years till twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, ma'am.
We have a motion, we have a second. It's need a vote.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Villarreal, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item thirteen, consider and take possible action on proposed twenty twenty summer curriculum resource, resources development.
I make a motion that we per, uh, approve item thirteen as presented in our board packet.
We have an, uh, we have a motion by Mr. Villarreal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
Can I hear about the resources? I apologize. Since we didn't have committee meetings, I would like to hear a little bit more about it, please.
Good morning. Good morning, Board President, uh, members of the board. Mrs. Vilma Garza, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and everybody that is viewing. At this time, the curriculum department is asking for your approval for summer curriculum writing. We are looking at using our drives to be able to monitor constantly, uh, just in case we aren't able to get together and do it as a whole. So, uh, last year, we did use our drives and every time that the individuals worked on the curriculum, we could see the process. So, uh, we're also looking at checkpoints to where we can go ahead and just do it online, just like we are doing this webinar.
What subjects are we targeting, Ms. Bassan?
Pardon?
The subjects that we're targeting?
Uh, we're tar- we're targeting all, all the different subjects, Mrs. Garza. The E L R, the science, the social studies, even the STAR alt, we want to make sure to provide opportunities for those individuals. We're also providing the E O C courses also, and the main, main focus will be the new, uh, TEACs. So we've got a little bit more dates for those. Those would be your English one, English two, English, uh, three, three and English four due to the new adoptions coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Quick question, and, and maybe, I don't know if this is pertinent or not, but, you know, uh, one of the things that we're hearing a lot from the parents who are doing the curriculum at home is that they're having some difficulties with their kids, of course, because they're not teachers, they're not as highly trained as the people, of course, that we pay to do this wonderful job. Is this gonna help target, to help us make sure we're not leaving any kids behind? Am I asking this in the appropriate, um, you know, in the appropriate part of the agenda? Because are there gonna be ways that we make sure?
Yes, ma'am. At this time, Mrs. Garza has, uh, instructed my, uh, department to make sure and start closing the gaps. We are working together as a team and we are making sure that we, uh, close the gaps as soon as they come. I think all Texas schools are working on the same thing. And what we're gonna do is a little more skill-driven curriculum to be able to do and also daily lesson plans. Do where we go ahead and do the skill and then have a little, uh, like five questions just to make sure that the children are on target. If they aren't, then that's when the remediation comes in.
Dr. B., are you referring to the current, uh, at-home, uh, activities that are taking place?
Well, yes, and I'm asking, I, I know that right now that that's basically what we're having to rely on, right, to continue curriculum. And seeing this proposed summer curriculum resource development, I just didn't know if there was gonna be any focus on closing those gaps. Parents are trying, of course, their best and, and I know a lot of them are reporting that they're having some difficulty. Um, so I just wanted to make sure, do we have any resources available, gotta, gotta help make sure that we, um, particularly in the summer, help to get our kids where they need to be before the beginning of the next school year.
Yes, and in fact, um, we're gonna bring together for you, uh, hopefully either a virtual summer, uh, school program or, um, if we, if everything is, is fine for June, maybe we could start a summer school program for those individual kids. But we're grading on progress, Dr. B., and it's not gonna be on all assignments. It'll be on, uh, two assignments per week at the elementary, one assignment per, per week at the high school. Uh, but it's based on progress and that's why our grading policy for, uh, COVID nineteen period is gonna be just pass or fail. And those individual students that, for whatever reason, were not able to complete their assignments either because they were left with grandparents or older siblings because the parents had to go work, then we're gonna work with those individual students. We even have administration that will start making phone calls to find out if there's any difficulties taking places at the homes so that we can, uh, provide assistance. So we will be providing multiple opportunities to assist those families, those children that were not able to complete their assignments.
And that's part of our summer curriculum resource development?
No, the summer curriculum resources that, uh, that was presented, that's, uh, a timeline for the next school year. Just to make sure that we have a time, a scoping sequence, a line to the TEACs, uh, for the, for next school year.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Are we providing all that right now?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that, uh, Ms. Gonzalez and I spoke and we, Ms. Gonzalez, Gina, and she's on here also. We spoke about, uh, I'm in charge of school improvement and she's the money lady. So one of the things that we spoke about was that we're gonna have to look at our schools at the beginning of the year. And instead of starting school improvement, only because I lived it myself this year with Gruia Elementary, that we kind of need to adopt what happened in Gruia Elementary because now, not everybody's at that point, but we lost a lot of time. You know, realistically, I'm an educator and I'm having trouble keeping up with my kids and having them do their work. And the fact that they don't have a teacher that's giving the direct instruction, I can provide the support and I'm having, you know, trouble providing that support to some extent. But, you know, we have to be realistic and see that, you know, there are gonna be gaps in our curriculum. So I know that Gina and I had said, why don't we adopt that school improvement model that we used at Gruia Elementary? We know how it works, we know what needs to happen. Why do we have to wait till January to do that? We need to start what happened at Gruia Elementary as far as, you know, having PLCs, having tutorials early on in the year. All those things need to be in place, I think, for all our elementaries because we can't. because we can't move away from the fact that our kids, after spring break, there was no instruction. Yes, we're providing packets, we're providing distance learning, our teachers are, you know, trying really hard, but it doesn't substitute, it doesn't, there's nothing you can do to make up having a teacher every single day and coming to school every day. But we know because of our situation, we have to work with it. But, you know, we talked about, why don't we take that approach and that model and say, you know what, all our kids are gonna have gaps, especially the little ones, because when they miss out months and months, even with the summer, we see that they lag, now we're talking about five or six months. And we have to be realistic and say, you know what, there's gonna be gaps. We're gonna have to come back and teach that second semester. So her and I have, you know, been talking, brainstorming is, why don't we take that model and say, okay, what did we do there? What worked, what didn't work? Okay, let's apply it to the other schools as well. Because even our middle schools are already in target support, and we're applying for grants, it's not much, but, you know, even the state recognizes that the ones that are in target support could end up in comprehensive, more so now because of those gaps. So, you know, it's something that we need to look at closely and say, you know what, why don't we start that turnaround process at the other elementary schools, if it worked for them, you know, it has to improve the other wor- the other elementaries as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification, because I think that a lot of people, and I'm sorry if I mentioned it at the inappropriate time, but I, I know that parents are, are like you're saying, um, Ms. Morris, that, um, as best as they're trying, of course, that there are gonna be some lag. And I just wanted to make sure that we have a comprehensive plan to kind of help to make sure that our kids are, are gonna have that gap coverage. Um, and I was wondering if there was anything, and thank you, um, um, Superintendent, for explaining, that we are gonna have some instruction in the summer that helps, of course, because we all know that the longer the kids are away from a curriculum, um, the, the harder it is to get them back on track. So thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
I just think that nothing's gonna substitute a teacher, so we're gonna have to make, uh, different modifications, and basically play catch-up at the beginning, whenever we start play catch-up. But the fact of the matter, how do you teach multiplication, division? How do you teach pronouns, nouns? Teachers teach, and without teachers, it's gonna be a little difficult, but hopefully you can rivet up and, and play catch-up and catch-up, and then move forward. There's a motion, sir? And a second, I believe.
Any more discussion?
No, sir, thank you.
Motion by Mr. Real, second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item fourteen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to purchase new English literature textbooks and instructional material for high schools from Pearson Publishing Company.
I move that we approve item fourteen as presented in our packet, but I, I have a little discussion.
We have a motion by Mr. Real. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. B. Any discussion?
Does the, the cost, do, does the state, does the state give us the money for those books?
Yes, sir, we have, uh, what's called the I, IMS, Instructional Material Allotment, and that takes care of all the textbooks that we have to purchase.
So it doesn't cost the school, the state pays for it?
No, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
And I think for, for purposes of those watching at home, I mean, the amount we're talking about is eight hundred thousand dollars, right?
That is correct.
So I like the fact that there's selection committees and these presentations. Can Ms. Bassan or yourself go into detail as to how this decision was reached, especially because it's gonna be the new English literature instructional material textbook now, and the funding is quite significant, so.
Ms. Bassan, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What we did is, we had a group of teachers, and also curriculum department administrators, they got together. We had three companies present. In order to be able to vote, they needed to make sure to have, uh, attended all three presentations. Once they attended the presentation, the committee got together, they discussed, uh, all of the presentations, and they came out and went ahead and, uh, recommended Pearson Publishing Company.
Was it unanimous, everybody?
Yes, sir, everybody was in agreement for the Pearson.
Thank you so much.
Could I ask you, what separates Pearson from the other ones? If you had to tell me a couple of, one or two rea- what separates Pearson from the other two companies, maybe?
I think what they liked is the, the support that they're gonna be able to have online, support that they, uh, have, and also they liked the alignment that it had.
And a lot of these textbooks are national core instead of Texas TEACs, and, and obviously, Pearson probably met our TEACs, uh, time, um, the majority of our TEACs. And that's one of the things that we look for, to make sure that either they're a hundred percent aligned to the TEACs, this Texas, uh, essential, uh, knowledge and skills, because the majority of our vendors are national core, and we don't teach the national core.
There's a motion, there's a second.
Motion by, uh, any more discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Real, second by Dr. B. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item fifteen, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between Region One Education Service Center and RGCC ISD to provide reading academ- academies for grades K three for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Do we have a motion on item fifteen?
I saw move.
We have a motion by Mr. Real. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. Any discussion?
Ms. Bassan?
The only thing I can say there is that House Bill three and the Legislation eighty-six requires that all kindergarten to third grade teachers and principals be, um,
Train.
take a reading academy, and it is, we need to make sure to have it before twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. At this time, we have a three-year plan, we're looking at a hundred individuals per, uh, year that will be training. We're looking at Region One being our guidance or our contact person for it, and the estimated cost is forty thousand dollars. We are going with a blended model, and the reason why we went with that, because that gives us an opportunity for the individuals to participate in a twelve-month period. It's through modules, and it's the one that we felt that is more suitable for our district.
And they will be continuing, they will be doing those virtually instead of face-to-face.
That is correct.
And this money comes from the, um, early childhood allotment.
Real quickly, this is nothing, has nothing to do with this item. I know that there's, have they provided the ballots for the Region One, the people running for the board? Usually they would provide them for us.
Becky, send it to you in, in the email. Did you get the email?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in the email, do we download it and send it, or?
You can just call Becky, and she can send it all for you all.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask her to follow up with you all.
Okay.
We have a motion by Mr. Real, second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item sixteen, consider and take possible action on Texas Curriculum Management Program Cooperative Commitment Form for TEKS Resource System for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
I move that we approve item sixteen as presented in our board packet.
We have a mo- we have a motion by Mr. Real. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. Any discussion?
Ms. Bassan?
Yes, I'd like to let you know that the TEACs Resource System, it's a system that it's a comprehensive system, and it's systematically, uh, K to twelve curriculum. It's a model designed to maintain the contingency development of, uh, our, our planning. It helps our teachers, it provides an instructional focus document, it provides us also as to, um, the vocabulary resources such as, uh, the STEM questions that the STAR uses, and it also gives us the misconception. So we know which area we need to target a little longer, because most children have difficulty working with. They also provide, um, every six weeks, a timeline for us for the whole year. Every six weeks, we go ahead and also can send people to Region One, or do it online, or they can come over and provide, uh, technical assistance or technical support also, and on the content areas by grade level. One of the good thing about it, one, one of the good things, uh, with this TEACs Resource System, is that most of the regions are involved in it. They go ahead and get together once a year, and they listen to us to see as to how they can improve the system. Also, anytime there's any updates or anything with TA or the Texas, um, Education Board, they go ahead and always be, uh, the front line, so you don't miss anything. And at this time, we are, uh, recommending that we go ahead and purchase it, it's, uh, sixty-one thousand five fifty-four, and we're look, using SCE monies one ninety-nine.
We have a, a motion by Mr. Real, second by Mr. Ramirez. Mr. Castillo? Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Item seventeen, consider and take possible action on request for permission to participate in the OmniTrack services through Region One ESC OmniSuite Technology Solutions. Do we have a motion on item seventeen?
I move that we approve item seventeen as presented in our board packet.
We have a motion by Mr. Real. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Ramirez. Any discussion?
Ms. Bassan?
The OmniTrack system, uh, provides us the opportunity to go ahead and take care of the mandated by TA for continuing education credit hours for our educators. It, uh, doesn't only distract the, the in-services that we have at the district, uh, site, but also region, the regional sites and any other provider. And this is required for us to have, and also, uh, they do archive all of our information.
Uh, I think it's important to note that, yeah, it's all-inclusive management software, and then I think twenty-nine school districts in the valley use it, so.
Right, and I did look over the reviews, and, uh, they are very happy with, uh, the system. And the total cost for us would be twelve thousand two forty-five, and we are looking at available funds from two eleven Title One. Ms. Gina Gonzalez is also helping us with this.
Thank you, Ms. Bassan.
We have a motion by Mr. Real, second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. It is now eight forty-three, under authority of the Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one dash five-five-one dot zero-eight-four. We're now headed to closed session.
Can the rest of you, except Dr. B and Leti, um, remove yourselves from the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Hello, hello? It is now eight fifty-one, and we're now back in open session. Item A does not require any action. Do we have a motion on, uh, item B?
I move that we approve item B as, uh, recommended by our superintendent in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Real. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Castillo. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Section nine, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Real, motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Castillo. Are, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. It is eight fifty-two, and we're now done with the board meeting.
Thank you.